Online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Jemian. Next item, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, July 28, 2020, Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on Tuesday, July 21, 2020, on the Bulletin Board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next?
Committee Development regarding Citywide Pedestrian Plan and Bicycle Transportation Plan Study Session.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, uh, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Is this Mr. Kusakian?
No, this is Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Najarian, okay, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, but I do need to announce a conflict that I have based on real estate that my wife owns, which is within 500 feet of a proposed bike path, the Verdugo-Wash Bike Path. So I cannot participate in that discussion. Mr. City Attorney, am I good to participate in the rest of this discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Najarian, yes. So you can participate in the majority of this discussion. I believe the discussion on the Verdugo-Wash is one slide in this presentation. So at that point, we will, the lovely folks from ISD will put you in the lobby, and then we'll have the discussion and we'll bring you back.
But I do retain my right to make a comment as a member of the public in general. Is that also correct?
That's correct. And just so to clarify, because we'd had that discussion before, the FPPC says when it's personal interest, such as ownership in a home or spouse's ownership in a home, you can't speak as a member of the public. That will require you to literally speak as a member of the public. So if you want to do it for this presentation or next week's discussion, when there's an agenda item related to Verdugo-Wash, you would need to call in as opposed to participating via WebEx.
And let me just ask one more question. We talked about the Verdugo-Wash, but I know that in this bike plan, there's many routes, there's many roads. If any one of those routes is in front of my house, am I also facing that same conflict?
We would, Councilman Najarian, we'd need to look at that a little, that'd be a little more fact-based inquiry. The Verdugo-Wash one is too, but because it's such a, it would be such a large project, it's a very, it's an easier calculation to make. It would, we'd really have to look at what kind of bike path that would be, how close it would be and what size it would be. From my understanding, I don't think there's anything that close to your residence or your spouse's other than Verdugo-Wash. But we will, we will watch out for that and make sure we assist you in avoiding any conflicts.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So, does yes mean, beers?
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council, we are here this afternoon to provide an update on both the citywide pedestrian plan as well as the bicycle transportation plan. As Mr. Jemian read into the record, this is a study session, so no decisions necessarily would be made today. We are here to provide an update and take away any feedback that the City Council may have, at which point we would then bring back a report at a later date if there were any significant changes to the plan that's before you. With that, Mr. Calvert is here to take you through the presentation. Mr. Calvert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. As mentioned, we are here to have a study session regarding the citywide pedestrian plan and the bicycle transportation plan. The goal here really is to give an update on the status of each of these plans and some of the projects associated with them. We like to review some of the key elements of the plans. When looking at the pedestrian plan, we want to look at some of the strategies that are part of that to improve pedestrian safety. And with the bicycle plan, we want to look at some of those strategies as well as some of the projects that have been completed in advancing that plan. As mentioned, this is, no action is being requested today, merely comments and feedback from council. If there are significant ones, we can return with a report at a later date. So with the citywide pedestrian plan, this plan was essentially broken into two parts. The first is what we refer to as taking stock. It analyzes the existing conditions of the city, the existing infrastructure, and also looking at the collision data, trying to identify hotspot locations where we have high collision rates and incidents and where we can improve the overall environment. Part two is what we refer to as taking steps, and this is really establishing a series of recommendations for infrastructure improvements and also non-infrastructure initiatives such as education campaigns, others such as safe routes to school, programs where we can encourage pedestrian activity, encourage pedestrian safety. Ultimately, the goals of this plan are to improve safety and the experiential quality of the pedestrian environment. In addition to safety, we're also trying to create an environment that's comfortable for pedestrians and attractive for pedestrians as well. And it also provides benchmarks, how we can improve that overall safety, safety for pedestrians. The plan was really informed by a pedestrian safety advisory committee as well as several outreach events that were held. This included walking tours. Really, the goal of the walking tours was to get pedestrians out on the ground, be able to give us feedback and response to certain locations, what could be improved, what could be made better. Some of the outreach events, and you can see to the right of this panel, where we asked participants, how could we make that environment better? What could we do to encourage you to walk more? And in this case, this event attracted a little over 400 attendees and a little over 700 responses. They were essentially asked, you know, I would walk more if, and some of the options were, and you can see kind of going down, down the line there, vehicles slowing down, if there was more traffic enforcement, if crosswalks were safer and more visible, if it felt safer, if there were more places to walk to, and a number of other responses. Those that participated were allowed to respond more than one time. They could provide input on more than just one, as evidenced by the over 400 participants and over 700 responses that we received. And really, the strategies that are incorporated as part of this plan really try to address some of these concerns that potential pedestrians and pedestrians had.
Can I make a comment before you move on?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah. I mean, first of all, I just want to say, I wasn't involved in this, of course, but I have friends who are on the advisory committee, and they universally said to me that they thought staff did a great job getting public input and that the consultants did a great job engaging that advisory committee. So I want to make sure that that's made clear. It's, you know, looking at this, it's obvious that, you know, our residents think drivers go too fast. And so, you know, we need to make slowing traffic our top priority, and we've all talked about this. We talk about the three Es, but I think, you know, we have to acknowledge that there's only so much we can do with enforcement. Maybe we can talk later about red light cameras, I'd like to, but I don't think enforcement is going to be the panacea, and I don't think education is going to really get us that far. We're seeing that with masks. So I really think this is going to be about engineering changes, and I think staff knows what needs to be done. We just, we just need to move on it. So I just wanted to make those comments at the outset.
Mr. Calvert.
So in order to develop strategies to improve the pedestrian environment, we needed to understand where we were at our weakest points. Essentially, what this map highlights are high collision corridors, and this is based on the density of pedestrian collisions, if you will, where we've had the most incidents where pedestrians have been struck by motorists. The circles with the numbers in there represent where they rank in terms of the density. You can see, number one, there being along Broadway, and we have some in Bran, but most of these locations are concentrated in and around downtown and in South Glendale. There's a couple there over in West Glendale and then moving up towards Locorcena. But most of these are concentrated in downtown and downtown adjacent neighborhoods.
Excuse me. Can you go back? What the line itself means? It's longer, it means on that street, the wider area is dangerous?
It represents that stretch of that road where the density of collisions was highest. So it may not encompass all of one particular street. If you look at Colorado, you can see there's a couple different segments on there, and it was those particular segments between those intersections where the greatest amount of incidents occurred. Where you see the red dots, that's where the highest concentration was, often at intersections.
So the east Colorado is more dangerous than west Colorado, the way I understand here?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what we should preface here before we dive into some of the strategies.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question?
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
I was trying to, so is our plan then that we're going to prioritize investments along these corridors? Is that what the conclusion of this chart is?
What I would say is this plan, one, addresses specific locations where we are challenged, where we have seen a high rate of collisions. There are specific recommendations for specific locations to address this map specifically. What I would also say is this plan also gives us essentially a toolkit. Things move, elements and ideas and concepts moving forward that could be employed if, say, another hotspot were to emerge as part of this map, or if another location became more intense. So there are location-specific solutions, but also I would look at this as a broader kit of parts, if you will, or a toolkit.
Okay. I mean, I would like to see us, you know, direct our investment, which is always going to be limited to these corridors, and especially South Glendale, as we can see here, almost all of it is South Glendale where, you know, there's probably a lower vehicle ownership rate, higher, you know, walk, bike, you know, transit rate among the residents. So that's where I would be recommending we put our dollars.
Okay, thank you. One more question, if you go back to that picture. So the way I understand from this picture is Glen Oaks Boulevard, it's so small. Which area of Glen Oaks is considered the worst area, you know, the top of Glen Oaks? Starts from which street and ends up where?
I don't believe we have the streets listed on here, on the specific map, but it's essentially the far western portion of Glen Oaks, that area highlighted in black with the number eight next to it. We could get the specific streets. I'm sorry, it's not listed on this, this actual map.
Well, I think it's, I see Justin somewhere in between. The Justin, I guess, so it's around.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
No, I'm sorry, it was me. It looks like it's around Highland. I'm sorry, yes. That's okay. It looks like it's around Highland, and it goes all the way to possibly Allen, around Allen.
Yeah, it's basically around western.
Correct.
East and west side of western considered dangerous. Okay. Thank you. Next.
So it's important to note before we look at the recommended improvements, that all of these would need to be studied through our citywide traffic study. And this includes default walk phases, leading pedestrian intervals, any of those non-infrastructure improvements. Physical infrastructure improvements will also need to go through a traffic analysis. So by having this plan and having these strategies in there does not mean that they are necessarily a done deal. They will need to go through further evaluation and consider traffic impacts. They would also need to go through a public engagement process, which we'll highlight in just a moment. But these projects would go through, any proposed project would go through the TPC, the Transportation and Parking Commission, and their review and recommendation would also come to council as part of council's review and approval or denial of the project. So just by having these recommendations in the plan does not mean that they are definitely going to go forward. There's still several other steps that need to be considered and processes that needs to move through.
Question, Mayor?
Ms. Devine.
Bradley, on the citywide traffic study, when do we expect that? Or what's the status of that?
Right now, that's something, given current traffic conditions, being that they are not normal, we would have to wait until that returns to normal to be able to do a fair evaluation.
Okay, so that would be, could be quite a while. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment on this slide.
Yes, please, Mr.
Did you go? Yeah, okay. A couple of things. One, I would recommend that we change the name of the citywide traffic study to a citywide mobility study, because emphasis, as we, as we know from the conversation we had recently on vehicle miles traveled, emphasis on traffic is really dated, and it doesn't really give us the traffic reductions that we expect. So I would like to see it called a mobility study focused on vehicle miles traveled and definitely incorporate bike and pedestrian plan implementation into the study.
Thank you.
That's one thing. Actually, I have another comment, which is that I really think we should not use the word road diet. It's a lightning rod. People don't understand what it means. It's like talking, it's like when we say defund the police. It just riles people up without providing good information. I think we should call it something like, you know, lane reconfiguration, lane re-stripping, or something like that. But I just think we need to avoid that term because it doesn't tell us much.
Thank you.
So any traffic calming project in the city, we'll go through these steps here that we've outlined. Identifying the candidate location, conducting a screening evaluation, there's a preliminary engineering study, meeting with residents, and that's kind of a multi-phase element as we're developing these project alternatives and designs. There is also a petition that is necessary, a hearing with the TPC, and then also, again, including any project within the citywide traffic calming priority list. And that's before any project can be installed. So again, any of these proposals in here, this does not mean that we're going to move directly forward with anything without proper public engagement, without bringing it back to council prior to approval.
I have a comment on that. Can we go back, please? I am very strongly opposed to this. This is unbelievably excessive and will bog us down, and we won't get anything done. We've already been delayed on this pedestrian plan for three years. Why identify candidate locations? What was the point of the analysis that we just had on the previous slide? We already know the locations. And the idea of doing a petition, really, in South Glendale, we're going to get enough people signing a petition, and why should we base public safety decisions on the whim of whatever minority comes out to any resident meetings or signs any petition? I really think we're setting ourselves up for failure with this kind of overly timid process where we are basically handing over public safety to the whim of popular opinion. And I think leadership means we know what needs to be done to protect our residents. We go ahead and we do it. I'm not saying we don't inform people, but the idea of two meetings with residents and petition is just, I think, ridiculous.
Continue, Mr.
Yeah.
So looking at some of the recommended improvements, though this plan is not yet adopted, there were a number of strategies that were pursued early on, including the safety education campaign. You may, obviously, you're familiar with the Be Street Smart campaign. This really focused on all modes of transportation, trying to recognize that pedestrians, motorists, and cyclists all share space together. There are all kind of safety measures that everyone can take, using the streetlight banners and sidewalk medallions as a means to remind pedestrians to keep an eye out for motorists, the banners to remind drivers that there are pedestrians walking across the street, to just recognize that there are multiple modes out there. Also, the Safe Routes to School program, which incorporated bicycle and pedestrian rodeos, walking school buses, and also the Bike and Walk to School days. So these were some of the education initiatives, non-infrastructure-related initiatives. There were also improvements made physically around schools. We will get to that later on as Public Works gives an update on some of the projects that were completed. But this really tried to help get that education initiative and information out there. As part of the plan, it does recommend following Vision Zero principles. And this is really about establishing a timeframe to eliminate fatal and serious collisions. It's a comprehensive approach. It considers all modes. The intent behind Vision Zero is to eliminate fatalities across all modes of transportation, not just pedestrians, not just cyclists, but also motorists. So it's a cross-departmental initiative or focus, if you will. It's really focused on a safe street design and speed reduction. As mentioned before, speed is one of the number one culprits in terms of our collisions and our incidents and fatalities, but also complete streets. And that's looking at designing the street from the perspective of the most vulnerable user first and advancing beyond pedestrians into cyclists and then motorists. It includes an education and enforcement element as well. And before we get into some of the design strategies, I did want to touch on the role of speed and design. This quote Anthony Fox, a former mayor of Charlotte, North Carolina, and Secretary of Transportation, had said, whether you live in a city or a small town, and whether you drive a car, take a bus, or ride a train, at some point in the day, everyone is a pedestrian. And this is an important point to make, and this is why, and this is one of the driving principles behind the pedestrian plan. We know that people will drive to our city, we know that people drive through our city, but also recognizing that at some point, they are likely going to be a pedestrian, especially in our high collision corridors. If you look at downtown, we know that people will visit there and they'll drive to visit or to utilize many of our amenities. But the goal is that they'll park once, and then they'll become a pedestrian in our downtown, and recognizing the importance of that and ensuring that, one, we can help eliminate some additional road traffic, but also make that a safe and comfortable environment for pedestrians. And speed is one of the most important elements to that. As you can see by this diagram on the right from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, a car at 20 miles an hour, if it hits a pedestrian, there's a 5% chance of fatality. That percentage goes up dramatically just by increasing in 10 mile-per-hour increments. It goes to 45% at 30 miles an hour, and 85% chance of fatality at 40 miles an hour. So it's important that the strategies that you'll see as part of the pedestrian plan are really focused on trying to reduce that speed to create a safer environment. Another way to look at it is that when you're a driver and that field of vision that you have, it's much wider when you're driving slowly. You can see much more in front of you. These images from NACTO, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, at 20 to 25 miles an hour, you have a generally good field of vision. You can see that entire street. Now, we take note of the pedestrian there in the black shirt and the khaki pants as we move through this sequence. As you increase your speed, that field of vision starts to get smaller. As you can see, that pedestrian is now starting to exit that field of vision, and by the time you increase 40 miles an hour, that field of vision is much, much narrower. So again, this, the design of streets, the ability to slow motorists down can really increase safety, and it can also influence the behavior of motorists. So for some of these recommended improvements, these first few are really focused on trying to improve convenience for pedestrians. Default walk phases, this was a conversation a month or so ago here at council, really about requiring no push button. This is the idea that they are synchronized with the parallel street. When that light turns green, so does the walking signal, the walk signal illuminates. The real focus behind this is to try to reduce collisions and propensity for illegal pedestrian crossings. An example of that is if I'm, say, 30 feet away from a light, and I'm not there in time to hit the button, I will not get the walk signal, and that may make me more likely to cross when I do not have that walk signal and the drivers are not paying attention, potentially not paying attention as much because they assume that they have the right of way. What this ensures is that that walk signal will be timed with that parallel street, and there's no need for a pedestrian to be in place for it to activate.
How come your picture is different than what we have?
So, and actually, I had to push the next button there. You'll notice in the printout, it doesn't have some of the images that are hidden behind these, so there's, some of them are animated, if you will. Another strategy is a leading pedestrian interval, and essentially, this gives a three-to-seven second head start for pedestrians. You can see that out of Glendale Wilson here, right by City Hall. The idea here is that pedestrians can start to claim that space of the right of way just before that light changes, get them out into the crosswalk and give them a running start, head start, if you will, more effective when it comes to cars turning right on red.
Comment on the last slide, please?
Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, so these things, we talked about these before, obviously, and these are such no-brainers. I really, I'm hoping we're not thinking of waiting until we do some mobility study to start implementing this. This stuff is easy to implement. It's obvious, we know it improves safety. We should be doing this now. I mean, especially in our high collision corridors, I don't see any reason why we would wait at all to do these things. Well, are we going to discuss this now, or should we wait to the end? Because, you know, there is a lot.
Okay, let's finish this because this is, we have so many pages in here. Let's finish it, then.
There is a lot to discuss, and, you know, don't say anything is a no-brainer, Dan. I mean, you know, there may be a lot of good merits to the program, but to say it's a no-brainer is kind of an insult to everyone else on this council. It's like, okay, what are we here for? It's a no-brainer. So let's, I understand the passion that you have, but let's, you know, let's go through this and talk about the pluses and the minuses as we do any other issue. And I'll wait till the end to make my comments.
Okay, let's finish this, and then everybody can comment on this, because otherwise, we'll be here for such a long time. Okay, Mr. Calvert.
High visibility crosswalks are another strategy. You can see on the right, this is kind of a standard striping, but creating zebra striping in this image, you can see it's more visible, especially for motorists coming down the street. This doesn't have to be done with just the standard white stripes. There are creative ways to do this as well. The example to the left, we've seen in many other cities where they use this as an opportunity to also incorporate art. But this makes the crosswalk more visible to motorists aware that pedestrians are crossing. Pedestrian refuge areas, this example here is San Fernando. Really, the goal here is to create a protected median for roads that happen to be wider than some of our more standard streets. And the reason why we do this is, and why this is a recommended strategy, is to address safety concerns for our most vulnerable pedestrians. This is actually the recommended proposal for San Fernando. You can see around that number one, that island, so that if a pedestrian cannot make it all the way across that street, they have an opportunity to stand there and wait until the next cycle to be able to make it across. And really, this is, again, on the principle of our most vulnerable users. If we look at the collision rates of pedestrians in the city of Glendale, they tend to skew towards the younger and the older population. This area bracketed in yellow, essentially between the ages of 60 and 79, this is where our collision rates are much higher than the share of the population of that age bracket. So it represents, senior citizens in our community are struck more often. You can also see towards the top of the chart, the ages between 10 and 14, at 15 and 19, same thing. So these pedestrian refuge islands can create a safe place for somebody who may be mobility-challenged in some manner or another to stop and wait for that signal to be able to allow them to cross the rest of the way. Turn pocket removals, this is removing some of the, in this example, some of the left-hand turn lanes that are there. This really, again, is trying to reduce the collision with pedestrians. Left-turning collisions are the most frequent in the city of Glendale. You can see in this example, it would remove those turn pockets and would also incorporate curb bulbouts, which we'll address those in just a moment. But 18% of our collisions between motorists and pedestrians occur at a left-hand turn at a light. What this really does is it helps reduce the exposure for pedestrians, it helps reduce the assumed right of way of a motorist to always be able to turn left, and really tries to help reduce those collision rates.
Can I ask a question about that last slide? That number, that 18% number, do you, have you looked at how much of that is, or I should say, have you looked at how it differs based on the different type of phasing that we have for left turns? I know some of our signals have a left turn, green, and then it turns red if you don't get the green signal and you have to wait, and others go to a green, I don't know how I can explain this, go to a green and then you have to yield. You can still turn left after you lose the arrow, but you have to yield to the oncoming traffic, and I would think that, I'm guessing that most of these are where we have that type of phasing and not a hard light, you know, that is, you know, the only indication for a left turn. And I don't know if you can, you can address those differences. I know we have both types in Glendale.
You are correct, that this would come from the left-handed, left turn where they would have to yield, the hard, red, hard green, those incidents are less likely. I don't have that off the top of my head. We could look back through that plan and get that information for you. But this is most likely going to come from those that are yielding on the green light and then trying to make that left turn when they have the chance when there's not the oncoming traffic.
And how are we deciding when to put in that more restricted phasing? I mean, are we doing that at these intersections that we've identified as high collision?
Well, this strategy isn't working with phasing. This would be to remove those turn pockets in general.
Okay, but phasing is another strategy, no?
Yes, we do talk about that here at the end of the pedestrian section.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Curb extensions are another strategy, and this is really about creating a tighter turning radii. This requires motorists to slow down more when they're making a right-hand turn. This requires motorists to slow down more when they're making a right-hand turn. The larger that radius is, the, essentially, the faster those motorists can take that turn, creating, again, that safety hazard for pedestrians. And that really goes to speed. Those right-turning collisions are the second most frequent form of collisions in Glendale. You can see in this example here at Pacific and Wilson, what those curb bulb belts would look like. And then looking here at this image, 12%, it's 18% for those left-handed turns, but 12% for the right, and that's the second most frequent. Some of the other strategies incorporated in the pedestrian plan include enhanced lighting, enhanced landscape buffers, improved wayfinding, and signal timing is a part of that. Those first three bullet points are really looking at trying to improve the aesthetic quality, the comfort for pedestrians, recognizing that we need to create a comfortable environment as well as a safe environment to encourage pedestrians, or to encourage more pedestrians. This was brought up earlier, we do not use the term road diets anymore in our pedestrian plan, but there are concepts and they're related to lane reconfiguration. This does not necessarily always mean the removal of traffic lanes like we often think of when we say road diets, or maybe in some prior examples that we looked at, but this can also be the narrowing of lanes. Narrowing the width where maybe we have more space than needed, where it can create more opportunities for either pedestrians or cyclists. For this slide, you have a different one...
Bradley? Sorry, Mr. May, I want to ask another question. In the pedestrian plan, there's also a discussion of speed limit changes and automated enforcement, but you haven't covered those here. And I understand that we're restricted on speed limit changes and there's some legislation that Laura Friedman sponsored, so I don't know where that is. But I would definitely want us to see what we can do to reduce those limits. I mean, I don't see any reason why we should have speeds over 25 miles an hour in a residential, you know, densely populated area. And then also the speed cameras, I know we've discussed those as well. I understand that West Hollywood or Beverly Hills, or maybe both of them, are using speed cameras. And there's a discussion now, apparently, about a preference for them because a lot of, you know, we're talking about policing and police violence and, you know, most of the problems are related to traffic stops. And if you automate, if you automate ticketing through cameras, you may be, you know, eliminating another potential problem with policing. But I'd like us to look at, look hard at both of those questions, speed and automated cameras. Or speed limits, I should say, and automated cameras.
So this slide, I would like to draw your attention to because it is different from what we provided you earlier as we were able to obtain more data and information today. This is looking at the rate of pedestrian incidents, collisions, and injuries and fatalities from 2003 to 2019. Some of this data is a little bit inconsistent, as you can see, from '03 to 2011, we have injury data, but we do not have the total collision numbers. From 2012 to 2018, we have both, and then 2019, again, we have injury information, but not the total number of incidents. You can see that we had spikes in '07 and 2015. This plan was conducted in 2016, and we did see a drop in 2016, 17, and 18 compared to some of the prior years in terms of total number of collisions and injuries. 2019, we did see a stark uptick compared to prior years, there was 117 total injuries that was bringing us back more in line with 2015 and 2007. So by looking at this data, we can see that we could reasonably assume that our education initiatives, our B Street Smart campaign, had an impact, but clearly, our work is not complete and there's more that needs to be done to continue to remind motorists of pedestrian So for the bicycle transportation plan, this was adopted by city council in September of 2012. As part of that, it was recommended that there were periodic updates and check-ins with council, and we did come before council in October of 2018. That was really for us, one, to give a refresher on the plan, some of those things we'll go through today, and then also to consider some amendments to the plan as part of the West Glendale work and some of the first and last mile connectivity at the transit center. The purpose of this plan is really to create a network of routes, not just discreet streets that cyclists can use, but to create a logical sense of north-south, east-west connectivity to connect to employment centers, to connect activity centers, and to improve existing bicycle facilities overall. These new routes, again, would be able to connect activity and employment centers and would also consider amenities such as the installation of secure bicycle parking to encourage more riders. As part of this plan, it's important to note the classification of the bicycle lanes, the types of bicycle lanes. A Class 1 is a paved right of way that is separated from the street. This can take many forms. It can be separated as its own path, as a designated path separate from streets, but it can also be separated from traffic through curbs, on-street parking, bollards, and planter boxes. So the goal is really to just make sure that there is a buffer between cyclist and moving traffic, and that can come in many formats. Here's just a couple of examples, you can see that one in the top left is using both bollards and on-street parking as you look further down the image. The one on the right is, top right is looking at planters and curbs. Planter boxes in the bottom left, and then, again, in the bottom right, that's more of a cycle track with that one-way travel and having a raised curb as well as planters. A Class 2 is a restricted right of way for cyclists, but is not physically separated, it's done by a striped line. This is something similar to what we have on north-central and downtown. It can be painted curbside or on the outside of the on-street parking. And again, just some examples. A Class 3 route is a designation by share, essentially, this is putting a pavement marking, it's not separating bicycle traffic from automobile traffic, it's not providing its own lane or protective lane, but signaling to motorists that this street can be used for cyclists. So if we look at the plan, this is the northern portion, and it's a bit difficult to see this, but any of the dash lines that you see are the bicycle facilities that have been implemented and completed. So in this, you can see that there are a couple of Class 2, their own lanes, though not physically separated, but painted lanes, and then a number of sharrows, Class 3 bicycle facilities have also been provided. This is also the case as we look at south and west Glendale and east Glendale, a number of those being primarily sharrows that have been completed. The plan was adopted in 2012, and as we look at, again, we have the safety data, again, kind of parsed out where we have some of the injury data, but we don't have total number of incidents. You can see there was a kind of a rapid uptick of injuries between 2006 all the way to 2012, and then it started to level out. Again, similar to the pedestrian plan, we did see an uptick in 2019 with the total number of incidents compared to 2018. As part of this bicycle transportation plan, and as part of that October 2018 update, we are engaged with the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study, and this is really looking at multimodal improvements along Glen Oaks and some of the other connecting streets. The emphasis of this study is improving bicycle infrastructure along that street, particularly looking at the potential for a protected bicycle lane, recognizing that is a major thoroughfare, there is high-speed traffic moving through and creating a safer condition. This is really about enhancing and strengthening the bicycle network. The results of this plan will be brought back to council's proposed amendments to the bicycle transportation plan. Also part of that 2018 study, there's a list of Class 2, Class 3 facilities, as well as a protected bike lane on Los Feliz, from the railroad tracks to Gardenia, that we are incorporating as amendments, as council had approved at that October 2018 meeting. What I'd like to do now is actually turn this over to our colleagues in Public Works. Edward Hitty is going to give an update on where these projects stand, as well as some of the completed projects that have been done for the bicycle transportation plan.
Thank you, Bradley. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor Agajanian.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian and members of city council. My name is Edward Hitty, I'm an Assistant Director of Public Works and city engineer. My segment of this presentation will consist really of two parts. Part one will go over the process of adding bikeways to our street, and part two will be to show you some example of such a completed bikeway project in the last few years. As we all know, this is a built-out city, however, the public works take every opportunity to integrate the implementation of the recommendations of the bikeway as identified in the Bike Master Plan in our street improvement project, which include the review and the verification of the different type of bicycle classes from Class 1 through Class 3, based on each street which has its own geometric limitations, different configuration, and site constraint such as public safety, right-of-way width, line of sight, and accessibility. This is an example of Central Avenue Adjacent Street Rehab Project. This project accomplished the construction of two bikeway classes back in 2013. The half a mile of Class 2 dedicated bike lane between Wilson Avenue and Doran Street was integrated in the design by reducing the travel lane and sidewalk width in both direction. The tenth of mile of Class 3 bike route was only able to accommodate sharrows in the design between Doran Street and Glen Oaks Boulevard due to the limited geometric configuration. We also, public works look into also different comparative funding sources based on the fund availability and project eligibility. Measure R mainly funds Class 2 and 3 bikeways as long as the bikeway project provides a sub-regional inner connection or improve the highway operation by decreasing congestion on the freeway such as riding along railroad right-of-way, flat channel, or street within one miles from the freeway system. The next project is the Ocean View Boulevard. As you see here, this is another example of approximately one-third of a mile of Class 2 dedicated bike lane, which was integrated in the design by reducing the travel lane also width and maintaining the street parking lane on Ocean View Boulevard between Verdugo Road and Hanurul Avenue in both direction. And this project was completed back in 2017. The next project is the Glendale Narrows River Walk Phase 2 and Bikeway Calvert Project. This is a good example of Class 1 bike path in two directions with one lane each. The bike path of one-third of a mile was constructed along the LA River between Flower Street and Verdugo Wash. This project was completed a couple years ago, back in 2018. The Kenneth Road Rehab Project, this is another good example of Class 3 bike route. The one mile, approximately one mile of Class 3 bike route was only able to accommodate also sharrows in the design between Sonora Avenue and Alameda Avenue at the sitewment with our neighboring Burbank, due to the current street geometric constraints and maintaining the street parking lanes in both direction. This project was completed actually last year in 2019. Last, but not least, the Highland Rehab Project. This is another example also of two bikeway class project recently completed in 2020. The half a mile of Class 2 dedicated bike lane between San Fernando and Glenwood Avenue was integrated in the design by reducing the travel lane in both directions. The other segment, the half a mile of Class 3 bike route, was only able to accommodate sharrows in the design between Glenwood Avenue and Kenneth Road due to also geometric configuration and maintaining street parking lane in both direction. This will conclude my segment of this presentation. I will turn it over to Bradley unless you have any question for me.
I'm curious on Highland, it's a kind of a steep street, so the bicyclists share the street with driver? Let's say you go north.
North.
Yeah. They share that lane?
Because there's no options at this point, this is due to the geometric configuration of the street, we're only able to share the road passing the Glenwood Avenue. If you want to maintain the street parking in both directions.
Thank you. Is there any question from, or Ms. Devine?
This goes from Pacific up Highland to Kenneth, or how does it, from where does it, where does it begin and it ends on Kenneth? Is that, am I right?
This for Highland Project?
Pardon?
Okay. The Highland Project is started from San Fernando intersection all the way to Kenneth.
Oh, San Fernando.
Correct.
Okay.
As I mean, sorry.
And the Class 2 goes from where? The Class 2 lanes?
The Class 2 starts from San Fernando all the way to Glenwood Avenue. This is almost half a mile.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any question? Council members, do they have any question or we continue? Okay, Verdugo Wash?
Bradley.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we want to close out with just a few more initiatives that we have going, and also support the pedestrian and bicycle plans. The first, the Verdugo Wash, as you're familiar...
Bradley, hold on. Mr. Nagari, we're going to just put you in the lobby real quick if we can have the ICD staff do that. I don't know how we're going to find her. She did? Okay, go ahead.
So as you're aware, council has allocated a budget to begin the visioning study for this project, and this is, one, the Verdugo Wash is already listed as part of the bicycle transportation plan, that being able to serve as a network and a spine for the bicycle plan and the bicycle network. This would also incorporate potentially pedestrian improvements as well. This is an opportunity for us to pursue open space opportunities that could be above or adjacent to the Verdugo Wash, and also consider opportunities for habitat restoration, recognizing that right now that that is a concrete channel, but that could also serve as a natural habitat. We know that there's, obviously, the Los Angeles River Revitalization Project on a much larger scale is looking at that, but we can also look at several other projects around the country where they are taking older infrastructure and repurposing that to serve both its original intent, but also to serve as pedestrian and cyclist spines and networks. The Atlanta Belt Line is one example. This is an item that we will be bringing back to council next week in advance of releasing our RFP so that we can give council an idea of what that scope will look like, but also what are some of the other inspirations from around the country that we've seen that could inform this study?
If we can bring Mr. Nagari back.
Slow Streets Project is currently an active initiative that we have. This is really about posting signs on designated streets, reminding motorists to slow down, especially now, recognizing that there are more pedestrians and there are more cyclists outside, more people out and about using the streets. Really about increasing that awareness, this was an application sponsor-driven process. We established a website where applicants could submit their proposed locations. Public Works evaluates that to make sure that we're not impeding traffic on a major thoroughfare, and this is really more of a neighborhood-focused initiative. We've installed about 10 of these locations. You do have an agenda item this evening regarding the funding for the additional locations. We have about 30 more applications out there. We have been in communication with those that have applied, who have been kind of stuck in limbo lately. We've given them an update on the timeline and when we anticipate to be able to move forward with those. I'd like to issue, one, my apologies to any of those applicants who may have had to wait a little longer than expected, but also to appreciate their patience that they have had with us as we've worked through the funding and grant process. This is just one of the examples that we have out there. You can see that we place these signs at the intersections, at the middle of the street, essentially where a car would stop, so it's really kind of serves as the gateway as motorists enter that block, they're reminded that there are pedestrians and cyclists out there, and you can see on this street, which is absent of sidewalks, there were some out there the day that we had visited that location.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
About the slow streets? Yeah. I think I've seen the list of the 10 we've done so far, so far, excuse me, and I believe they're mostly in North Glendale, maybe there's some in South Glendale, I'm not quite sure. Can you, can you tell us, you know, of the 30 that are pending, you know, roughly how many are in South Glendale? My concern is... My concern is that, you know, the people in North Glendale probably are generally going to be more tuned into this. And so they're going to be asking more for this. And I think our original, at least my original intention was that we focused in South Glendale where, you know, we're more densely populated.
I don't have the percentage off the top of my head, but in the first 10, I believe it was either six or seven of them were actually in South Glendale. And what we've seen from the applications submitted thus far, it's been pretty close to a 50 50 split. We had assumed the same thing. We thought maybe there would be more tilting towards North Glendale than South. But we've actually seen a pretty even volume of applications from both sides of the city, which has been very pleasing to most of us.
You're saying the 10? Because I saw the list of the 10, I didn't think, thought they were almost all in North Glendale.
Out of the current 10, I believe there's either six or seven of those are in South Glendale.
Really?
We did have some that were in duplicate application. I know in an earlier list that we had put out, some of them were listed twice. So it did look like the list had tilted more towards north.
Okay.
And then lastly, as part of that slow streets implementation and asking for council approval, then we also had asked for approval on demonstration projects. This is one of the philosophies behind the West Glendale Study and something we would like to expand beyond. Looking at our pedestrian plan, looking at our bicycle transportation plan and being able to incorporate temporary improvements that replicate those permanent long term infrastructure improvements. This can be done in a variety of ways. As you can see in the images to the right, you have a temporary pop up protective bikeway that's using planner boxes to allow one residence to test out what that bicycle lane could look like. It also provides the cities an opportunity to collect data to see how well it performs. This is something that we are planning on doing with West Glendale. Hopefully later this summer as we have started to kick back into the public engagement process in this new kind of COVID era. But you can also look at that image on the bottom right. And this is an example of a curb bulge out. Rather than having to go in and extend that curb with physical infrastructure, they've tested this out with potters and bollards and paint to see if it works. And that allows the city to be able to evaluate whether or not motorists have slowed down, whether or not those collisions have reduced with that kind of turning radius. So we are still evaluating some of the locations in our high collision corridors where we can deploy some of these. As I stated, the project in West Glendale is something that we'll move forward with later on this summer. But we're looking for other opportunities as well, really on the idea that we want to make sure that what we're proposing as part of both of these plans is something that will work before investing in the physical infrastructure. So that concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any question from Mr. Coleman? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bratman?
No. This is council member.
Sorry, thank you. Mr. Kasakian?
That's all right. Okay. I had a couple of questions. One was regarding the installing of bike parking. I know the city used to have bike lockers on its campus. Why were they removed?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we're all looking at each other. Good question. Councilmember Kasakian, I'm not sure why they were removed, but we will find that out and provide that information.
Yeah. And please do, because it was one of the suggestions. And, you know, maybe there's better places in the city suited for this. But if we had them and they weren't utilized or they were vandalized or they weren't effective, whatever the case may be, it's important for us to know what happened before we move ahead with that.
Do you have an answer?
Oh, somebody came up.
We do, we have an answer. Essentially, the location where they were was determined that it was not safe.
So the lockers itself did not keep the bikes safe?
Just the location in general. I believe it was near a fuel pumping station. So that alone created some unsafe conditions. And then just the general area where they were located was deemed as being unsafe.
Now, the ones I'm referring to were actually not next to a fuel pump station. They were actually close to the G W P building.
That's the one I'm thinking about, yes.
Yeah.
We'll look into it.
I don't expect anyone to have an answer right now. I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, just raising that issue. Also a question for the city attorney. So what distance from real property will trigger the recusal of a council member based on some of these routes and decisions that are made regarding them?
Councilmember Kasakian, so the 500 foot rule, and it's been a couple of back and forth. It presumes, it establishes a rule that projects within 500 feet of a proposed project are material unless there are facts, one way or the other, indicating. So it's a rebuttable presumption. So we have to kind of look at each route and see whether it was. With the Verdugo Wash, it was a pretty clear answer because that is a rather big project. So as we go through these, if there's an issue with a particular route that might be within 500 feet of anybody's real property interest, you know, that is something we can look at and assess whether or not we can opine that it's not going to be material because even though it's, you know, if you're striping one lane, for example, that's close to a council member's house, that's likely not going to be a material financial impact on the council member's financial interest. So it's really case by case factual. So if you're aware of a particular route that might be close to your real property interest, please feel free to let us know and it's something we can look at.
What if it's more than striping?
That's what I'm saying. It's case by case and it's factual. So if I would advise, it's probably advisable for all the council members to look to see whether or not there's any particular improvements that might be within 500 feet. And then we can certainly take a look. And we can do that as well. We have that, we can certainly go through the list and see if there are any within the 500 feet and make that determination. But at this point, because it's very planned level, other than the Verdugo Wash, because it's so very clear that it likely raises the conflict. It's at this stage, it's permissible to go forward. And because we're not doing anything, we're just providing some preliminary comments on the plans that we have before us.
So if we're providing preliminary comments, is council member Najarian, for instance, not allowed to be in the room?
No, he is. Because again, you're not making any decisions. And as long as he doesn't address the Verdugo Wash. And my only caveat there is if the council wants to have a discussion on the Verdugo Wash, then I would ask council member Najarian to step out, so to speak, once again. Other than that, on the rest of the plan, the council can have a discussion about whatever's in the proposed plan.
Well, I would like some clarification on this. And I would like that to come sooner rather than later. I would like to see, I would have liked to have seen staff kind of anticipate this issue and looked at all of our addresses, which as you stated, you already have, to make a determination. I mean, I'm certainly making my decisions based on the impact of mobility and how we improve mobility for all of our residents throughout the city. But live just half a block below Glen Oaks. And it would appear to me that depending on what we vote on throughout the city or the direction we move in, that could potentially prove a conflict, which I can't really see how. It's not, I don't understand the material benefit to me for something that is a route that takes people from clearly one side of the city to the other. But I'll wait your opinion and I'll wait your, whatever information you can bring back to us on that.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of other things I want to say that, you know, one of the things in terms of the crosswalks, the decorative crosswalks are fine. But I know I had raised this with staff before and I'd like to bring it up again. Has there been any studies into including optical illusions to slow down traffic in certain areas?
There are certain standards that a crosswalk has to meet in terms of visibility, contrast ratio, things like that. So it still has to pass essentially engineering muster, if you will. It cannot just be any sort of decoration that can go into a crosswalk.
Certainly. I know, but other states have incorporated this tactic, if you will, to try and slow down traffic. Has it been done anywhere else in California? Do we know it or are we just completely dismissing it outright?
A number of cities do incorporate it. I know San Jose off the top of my head and San Francisco are both ones that do incorporate creative crosswalks, if you will. Now, I don't think many actually prohibit it.
Okay. So if that is the case, it may not be for every neighborhood, but it could work for some. And I'd like to see that incorporated as well because it is certainly a very cost effective way of slowing traffic down on certain street. I do like the Vision Zero Plan. My concerns are that in places like city of Los Angeles, which adopted Vision Zero, there hasn't been much of a decrease. In fact, there's been an increase in pedestrian accidents and fatalities. But we have to try. And I think we need to concentrate and make our best effort. I support like the turn pocket removal concept if it's going to help. I also would like to just state that, you know, we need to concentrate on those areas on the map which we saw are problematic. But if it doesn't, if we don't take a holistic approach to this, the residents will rightfully complain that their streets will become the cut through streets to avoid the areas where we do implement certain measures. So we need to also consider how we can slow traffic down on those streets as well. And if that means taking the street humps and making them into more prominent street bumps, that's something to seriously consider. And I've mentioned this before, to make it easier for neighborhoods to ask for those and to have them installed. I don't want us to solve a problem, but export it to another part of the city. And ultimately, I think we all agree here today that the right for someone to drive fast in Glendale should never outweigh our residents' safety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, I guess this was for information, right?
I have some.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Bratman.
Some questions and comments. So I'll start with a question. So what, where do we go from here on the pedestrian plan? What's the, what are the series of steps before it gets adopted by council?
So following this meeting, we're planning to file our MMD for the pedestrian plan. And that will open up a comment period for the public. And following that, following that public comment period, following our response to those comments, we would return to city council to ask for formal adoption of the pedestrian plan. We would anticipate doing that somewhere anywhere between 45 and 60 days from now, depending on timing and other items.
So formal adoption, you're saying 40 to 60 days from now?
Correct.
Okay, that's not too bad. Okay. And then on the Bike Master Plan or the Bike Transportation Plan, what is our, what is our plan there? And I ask because, you know, it's a 2012 plan, which is clearly out of date and should be modernized. It's a, it's a shallow dependent plan and sharrows really are not appropriate for high speed carders. And I think we still don't have, and correct me if I'm wrong, we still don't have a real network. We don't have a full north, south or east, west continuous protected or even unprotected, but separated bike lane. So, I mean, I certainly would like to see the bike plan, you know, given a total refresh. I'm wondering whether that is something you're already planning or would council need to request that specifically?
We had brought the plan to council back in October 2018. That's where we had discussed the amendments related to the West Glendale Study as well as the first and last mile connectivity around the transit center. Otherwise, that would take council direction in order to bring that back to pursue any additional amendments.
Okay, well, I mean, I certainly would like to see us take a fresh look at that plan. It is quite outdated now. It's eight years. And as I said, it's really very, very heavily dependent on sharrows, which are, I think, no longer considered bike infrastructure. I mean, they're kind of add on for maybe side streets. But as your basic bike infrastructure, sharrows are just not going to get people comfortable, feeling safe enough to ride. So I would, I would like to see us, if somebody else agrees with me, I would like to see us go and do a kind of a full update or refresh or whatever we want to call it so that we kind of have a bike plan that fits, that, you know, comports with the latest understanding of what, you know, a good bike infrastructure looks like.
I would agree with that. I would, I would second that.
Thank you.
I, okay, Mayor, I have a few comments.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Thank you, thank you very much. I won't take too much time. You know, I don't feel it's my, in my purview to design our streets or our lanes or anything like that. However, when you talk about infrastructure improvements, I think there are some that are really important. And that's a lot that we can be doing right now that we don't have to wait for a study or for comments. You know, everybody's, one of the infrastructure improvements that was mentioned by our residents was the fact that we need to slow traffic down. And we can do that with bike lanes. And I really feel like, like Glen Oaks is a perfect, perfect location for a bike lane. Now, you tell me that there is a bike lane on Glen Oaks. I don't know where it is. So what I'd like to see done right now, today, starting tomorrow, is that wherever we have these designated bike lanes, let's paint them because I don't see them. And I don't know that any other drivers see them or cyclists see them. I agree that the traffic calming steps, I think we can pare those down. I don't think we need to go through the 10, the 10 steps. I think that is kind of arduous and some of them, I think, are a bit redundant. And so I think we can, we can change that a bit. The pedestrian refuge area is another one of my topics that I want to discuss. You know, have we done any of these? Because I remember when Laura Friedman was on council and we discussed the danger in these medians and when people stand there on, just on Glen Oaks again, I'll use that as an example, and how dangerous it is. Have we done any of this, this safety infrastructure?
Mr. Mayor, member of City Council, Councilmember Devine? In response to your question, yes, we have. I want to say back in 2015, 2016, as the outcome of the pedestrian safety advisory board's recommendation, we implemented some of those pedestrian refuge along Glen Oaks Boulevard. I do recall specifically one at Western.
Pacific? Is there one at Pacific?
There is one at Western for sure.
Western?
Yeah, because that came up as one of the intersections with the highest number of accidents. But I want to say there are at least two, maybe three of these that we have already constructed along Glen Oaks Boulevard.
I would like for you to take a look at that right away. I don't think we need to wait for any studies. I think you have, you have data that you can go by. And Pacific and Glen Oaks is another one where people are speeding through and it is, it is dangerous. Let's see, that's the refuge area. The curb extensions, is that similar to what you've done at Arti White on the corners there when you talked about curb extensions?
That is correct, Councilmember Devine.
Okay, those, those are good. I often think that people are going to ram their cars right into those. You have to be very careful and go very slowly. So those are a good, I agree with those. Again, I think, you know, you're telling me that we have class two bicycle lanes. I don't see any green lanes. Do we have green bicycle lanes?
They're not painted. They're the ones on Central.
Actually, we do have, we do have one painted bicycle lane.
On?
I want, Sonora, I believe.
Sonora, Sonora.
Sonora, on Sonora. Well, I think they should all be, all be painted so that we, we know where they are. Uh, Ocean View and Verdugo, paint. Um, I think the Verdugo Wash, for us to, um, kind of hang our hats on that as being the, you know, we used to talk about, um, uh, the park, the cat park, as pie in the sky. And I'm looking at the Verdugo Wash as pie in the sky. That, that, that's going to be a while to come. And so I think we have to kind of say, yes, this is going to happen, but we have to make changes sooner than when that occurred. Um, I like the idea of connectivity, and I, and I agree. One of the notes that I wrote was that we have to focus on networks. Uh, Verdugo to Glendale Avenue to Los Feliz. Uh, Verdugo to Verdugo and to San Fernando, um, in order to, to have connectivity and to keep, and I have to tell you, to keep cyclists out of our neighborhoods, because all we have in the neighborhoods are sharos. We also have very narrow streets. And sometimes when I see them, and sometimes they don't obey the traffic signals, they're in the middle, they're, um, we, if we have designated Class Two bike lanes, uh, well-marked, running east-west, north-south, I think maybe that's where they will be concentrated. And I think that would be a good thing for our city. I think we have all of the information that we need to start doing these projects. And, um, I, I hate to see us continue to put them off. Um, I think the, uh, the crosswalks that we've done in the past, I know, uh, I, I recommended, I was one of the council members that recommended the zebra, the zebra, uh, crosswalks, et cetera. And we put those in. They're fantastic. They've saved lives, I know it. Uh, they've made crossing the street safer, and will continue to do that. So, um, I really feel like we have some good ideas in this, these plans, and I think we should start, um, start putting them into, into action. Uh, thank you, Bradley, for the report. Very good, well done, um, and to staff. Those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brockman.
Just, just a few other comments. Um, one thing is, um, there was one slide in there, I forget which one, that talks about, you know, taking, taking opportunities when we do road, uh, repaving to implement our bike recommendations. I'm not sure that that always happens. Um, I believe we did some work on Glen Oaks, uh, East of Brand when it got, uh, I'm sorry. We did not do, uh, any, any bike work on Glen Oaks, East of Brand when it got repaved a few years ago. Um, and I, I think there are a number of others. I think, um, we were originally supposed to add bike lanes to Orange, and I don't think that happened. So I would like to, um, be able to identify well in advance what streets we're looking at repaving, uh, and, and to make sure that we do everything as far as, you know, um, you know, application for grant funding or whatever it is, so that we don't get into a situation like we did recently with Los Feliz, I think, or I forget where it was, where, you know, we were, we were acting on some grant funds, and it was too late to make any changes. It was too late to incorporate any, uh, bike infrastructure. I want to get ahead of that, uh, and make sure that every time we're putting money into road resurfacing, we are taking advantage of that opportunity to add bike infrastructure, so long as it's part of our plan.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Golanyan. Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Brockman. On an annual basis, when we bring forward to City Council our annual budget for review and adoption as part of the CIP, um, program that we present to City Council, there is a list of the proposed projects for the following year. So the, the advance notices when that, uh, CIP budget comes in front of, uh, council. And we can definitely go into more details of whether these, uh, projects entail installation of any biking facilities.
That would be very helpful, thank you. Um, and, uh, I'm just looking at my, my notes. I, I also wanted to ask about, um, you know, we had this, uh, a hit-and-run incident the other day with a fourteen-year-old girl on East Garfield. Um, and, and I hope she's doing all right. I haven't heard, I don't know if any of us have heard any updates. Um, but, um, that street, I looked at that street, um, you know, it's right, right next to Horace Mann. It's a very long street, and there's, I think, one crosswalk in front of the school. There are no, like, there are no stop signs along Wayzett. Drivers really pick up a lot of speed, uh, as they go down. And, um, and I think Windsor has the same situation, maybe even worse. And it's, and it's a densely populated area. I think maybe, is it Acacia that might have once? Uh, in any case, I, I would like to see if we could, um, without going through all of the, the process of petitions and everything, if we could just look at whether we should be doing something in that, on that, that street, and any others like that that are very long, that are, you know, there's really not many safe places to cross the street. You know, there's a school, um, it just seems like a place, the, a place where we should be proactive and not wait for a community to request it.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, Councilmember Brockman, I believe Chief Povolitis is on, uh, WebEx, and can give an update on two pedestrian, uh, accidents that, that occurred, uh, in the recent weeks, of which one was a hit-and-run. Uh, Chief Povolitis, if you're on, if you could please provide that update, I would really appreciate it.
I, I am on, if you can hear me.
Yes.
So, as I said, we had to, so let me start with the one that occurred on, uh, Garfield, uh, where a, a young girl, who I believe is at least doing okay at this point, is the last report that I've heard, uh, was crossing the street and was hit by a car. Uh, it appears that what happened is there's, was a, uh, vehicle double parked in the eastbound lane. That was a larger, a larger vehicle, uh, the kind that would be either do deliveries of produce or something along that line. Uh, and so she went to the front of that vehicle, stepped over into the westbound lanes. A car that was headed eastbound moved into the westbound lane to pass the, uh, to pass the double-parked vehicle. And that's when the, when the traffic collision, uh, occurred. Uh, the second one we had was on Colorado near the, uh, Gallerino approaching Columbus. In that case, we think she had, uh, an individual pushing a car, uh, more of the type that you find in hardware stores or lumber. Uh, so this person was not in the, was not on the sidewalk, but was actually pushing it in the, uh, westbound right-turn-only land approaching Columbus when struck from a car from behind. Those are the two that we've had in, uh, about the last seven days.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Golanyan. Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Brockman. Response to your other question, um, there is no petition requirement for installation of crosswalks on the street. However, there are standards that our engineering folks will have to follow in order to be able to warrant the installation of a crosswalk, which includes certain speeds and volume of traffic. Uh, so on, on a long stretch like that, we, and we have done this before, uh, we can do a speed and volume analysis. And if it meets the criteria, then we can most certainly install these, uh, crosswalks. Crosswalks are not considered traffic calming measures by, by any means, and as such, they don't have to meet the requirements of traffic calming guidelines. However, uh, City Council adopted some new amendments to the traffic calming guidelines around schools and parks that reduce the criteria, uh, to meet the warrants. So it makes it easier to install traffic calming measures around schools and parks, um, as of, I think, a couple of years ago.
And, and could we look at Windsor as well?
We most certainly can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I didn't speak, but I-
Yes, Mr. Katsak.
Are there any public comments that are out there?
Oh, Mr. Najarian. Go ahead.
I'd like to speak, but I'd like to know if there's any public comments that are out there, waiting to come in.
Do we have any calls?
Yes, Mayor, and Councilmember Najarian, there is one caller on the line.
Okay, let's listen to the call.
Katie, you're live, Katie?
Hi, my name's Katie. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Katie Miles. I live on Mountain Street, West Mountain Street by La Zanja and Verdugo. And, uh, I would love to be able to ride my bike in Glendale, and I don't, because I'm scared to death to ride my bike here. I rode my bike almost every day when I lived in Brooklyn, and since I've moved here, I don't ride it at all. Um, I'd love to be able to ride my bike with my family, with my kids, but I'm, I don't ride with them anywhere except for at a park. Um, Glendale's pretty flat, the weather's fantastic. It would be great to be able to ride my bike, run errands, and I would happily do it. I have fast if on my bike, but I'm too scared. The drivers here go way too fast. And even with bike lanes, it scares me because the cars don't respect the bike lanes at all. So I think there needs to be a definitive, uh, curb, or the bike lane has to be on the other side of parked cars. Um, that's pretty much all I want to say. Uh, I really hope that you guys do something. I would love to see a bike lane on Mountain Street. It's such a great way to get from one side of Glendale to the other. Um, I would happily ri- ride with my kids to school or to visit friends or to run errands. Um, but I just can't, it's way too scary here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other call?
Mayor, there is, there's one more caller.
Okay. All right.
Carrie, you're on the air, Carrie?
Hi, uh, this is Carrie Field, and I'm calling in to support an updated bike plan and what you guys are talking about today, which is making Glendale streets safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, and our children. Um, there are bike lanes on Glen Oak. I take Glen Oak all day, every day practically, and nobody pays attention to them. There's a dotted line where you're supposed to get over to take a right off of Glen Oaks onto, let's say, Grandview. And people will pull into that a block, half a block beforehand, and have absolutely no respect for it being a bike lane, nor do people seem to even notice it. I think if you painted it green and had some kind of curb to protect the bicyclists, that would be extremely helpful and important to saving lives. And just in general, not having to do so many studies to be able to do things like speed humps or proper crosswalks near schools would be so important, because it's just ridiculous that we can't enjoy Glendale's beautiful streets with our children and on our bikes and with our pets and out enjoying nature because of the crazy drivers that we have here. So I support what you guys are doing. Thank you for doing this. I hope you take action quickly. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other call?
Yes. Alec, you're live, Alec?
Yes, hi, my name is Alec Rochesof, resident of Glendale. Uh, I used to work, serve on the TPC and also on the advisory committee for the pedestrian plan. Um, I wanted to commend the city's efforts to establishing a pedestrian plan. I think the plan has a lot of good, uh, measures in it. Um, however, I think we're halfway there, and I think it's, uh, up to you, who have the political will, to implement the plan. Um, I also think it's time to, uh, revisit the bicycle plan. Uh, it's severely outdated and is heavily share-o-dependent, which is not providing much comfort to residents of Glendale who are wanting to bike but are too afraid to. Um, and I think it's about time we revisit that strategy and pursue more aggressive measures, such as bike lanes or protected bike lanes. So I think it's a step in the right direction. However, I, I really hope that today you guys can decide to move ahead and to do so in a, in a bold way. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all, Mayor.
That's all. Okay. So, uh, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Golanyan.
Mr. Najarian wanted to speak. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Najarian, please.
See what happens when I'm not up there? You forget about me.
Yeah.
Um, so I think, I think the important and overarching goal for this council, and every council, is to make sure that our residents stay safe, whether they're walking, biking, um, well, we eliminated scooters, uh, walking, biking, jogging, uh, and, and whatnot. So the streets need to be available to, to all modes of transportation. Uh, but I do feel very strongly that when we're talking about traffic calming, that we have to go through the steps, uh, that Bradley put out, the Traffic Calming Program steps. These aren't just our steps, we just didn't make this up. These are almost word-for-word out of the Bible, the Traffic Engineers Handbook. Um, the important thing in all these steps is that the public gets many opportunities to be heard, to modify the plans, to, uh, discuss technical issues. Um, it's not that we can't do everything quickly. I mean, we could, we could unroll, uh, projects and have them, you know, the paint would be dry in three or four weeks, but that's not what we should do. We should reach out, and I'm all, I'm committed to giving our residents as much input in the process as possible, even though it seems as though it's redundant and it's, you know, repetitive, slowing down the process, et cetera. Um, some of our, some of our things that we've discussed, uh, may have profound impacts on, on certain things. We have, as a council, we have taken steps without involving the public. We had that diagonal crosswalk up in Montrose, and we thought it was a great idea, but we were, you know, we caught a lot of flak for it because, mainly because the public was not involved in the planning and the discussion of it. Um, Verdugo Road, who remembers the traffic diet on Verdugo Road? It was about nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand. This is when, uh, the Director of Public Works decided that it was important to have only one lane of traffic north and south on Verdugo, and he implemented that. There were no hearings, it didn't go to the TPC, it was just done. They put the paint down, and it was very, very, uh, unpopular, and I'm using that as a polite way, with the residents. Um, they couldn't sandblast the striping fast enough once the public saw what had been done without their input. So I really think we need to go through the proper procedure. If it's a good idea in our minds as council, it, it should become an even better idea once we're able to fine-tune it with our residents, with the experts, with the TPC. Uh, no one then can say that we rammed this down their throat. Um, the, the issue of speed cameras, and we've done that before. Uh, the problem is, uh, the judges in Los Angeles County will not enforce a speed ticket by camera. And they won't enforce even a right-turn camera, uh, without stopping by, by camera. I, and I would much rather have, and there's constitutional issues. I mean, that was the issue, that you have to be able to, uh, to meet your accuser, there has to be a eyewitness to your violation. Um, so at one point, we thought that was the solution. We had three, I believe we had three red light cameras, and, um, it just, it didn't work out very well. The same thing with speed limits. We all want the cars to go slowly, but we can't just lower a speed limit from a, you know, let's say it's a commercial area from thirty-five down to twenty or twenty-five, uh, for several reasons. One is, due to the state of the law, we can't enforce the speeds with radar or laser, LADR, I guess, is what we're using now. Uh, it's considered a speed trap. So we tie the hands of our enforcement officers by lowering that. Will there be state legislation? Maybe. The other problem is, is that, oh, just lowering the level to an artificially low speed limit, uh, creates oftentimes more dangerous conditions than the cars going at the eighty-fifth percent- creates oftentimes more dangerous conditions than the cars going at the 85th percentile. 85th percentile is what we set the speed limits at. So if you lower it very low, you're going to have people trying to pass, rear, what do you call it, riding the bumper, tailgating. So those issues crop up as well. So I think we need to be careful when we, when we do this. And I'm just saying, I've, I've been through this, through several rounds with, with councils before. The bike plan is great, but I know it comes at a cost. How, Madam City Manager, what's the cost of a bike plan?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, Councilmember Najarian. If I remember correctly, the last bike plan cost approximately 200 to 250,000. So I would assume it would be in the same ballpark, if not slightly higher.
Okay. So I'm not saying it's not worth it, but just so we know, that everything we do comes with costs. And I know from the last two or three meetings, ever since we did our budget, there is a strong, a strong emphasis on reducing costs throughout this city. So bottom line, you know, I, I support, I support most of these proposals. I'm not opposed to any of them off the bat. But I do think we need to go through the proper procedure. And I, I look forward to more robust discussions with the different stakeholder groups, not just the bike, you know, not just the bike coalition, but, you know, the walk bike and those that aren't part of that, just the regular folks that may be faced with a street improvement on, on their street. I hope we can get all of them in. And when we do decide what we're going to do, that we, you know, with a, with a clear conscience can say, we did everything the right way, we ran it through our city, and this is what our residents really support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to follow up on that with a few things. First of all, I, I am not, and I don't think anybody is talking about just rolling things out with no limitation whatsoever. I don't think we need to make things all one extreme or all the other extreme. I think we can cut some of those steps and we can still have the type of communication with the public that we need. But I also think we're, we're, we're entering into a new world and we need to lead. And we need to be less timid when we know that something is, is going to improve safety. We have, you know, what, in the last decade, we've, we've added maybe 2,000 housing units here in Glendale. I don't know how many, anyway, thousands. In the next decade, we're going to be adding a lot more of that if, if these RENA numbers that were being given hold. Now, we cannot continue to look at our city the way we have been. We cannot be creating a situation where the only way people that are coming into these housing units can live is by having multiple cars. We need to be thinking differently and creating an environment where people can do many of the things that they now do in a car without a car. Otherwise, we will drown in cars. And so I think we need to lead, and I think we need to think differently. Now, on things like speed cameras, I would like us to look into this. I understand that West Hollywood and Beverly Hills, one or maybe both, do this. Let's look at what, what the situation is there and, and the situation with the law is. And on speed limits, I'm not saying we just lower speed limits because yes, I know that if we are below the 85th percentile, we can't enforce with, with, with our, you know, electronic methods, LAR or whatever it's called. But there, there is, you know, legislation that was passed, I don't know, I think a couple of years ago by, by, it was carried by Laura Friedman, who created a task force that's supposed to relook at the methodology. I would like to know where that is, what we can do to support it. And, you know, we need to not just say, oh, this isn't going to work or we've done this before. That's not good enough. That's why we are where we are today with very little improvement in this, in the safety environment. And people are very clear that they want action, they want better safety right now.
Okay. Thank you. What's next, Mr. Najarian?
That would be it, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
That would be it, Mayor.
Okay. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Do I have second?
Second.
Thank you. With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 5:18 PM. Now, do we have Mr. Najarian read closed session items?
Roll call, please.
Okay.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Councilmember Devine?
Here.
Kusakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Mr. Garcia, are you reporting anything tonight?
Into the record. Mr. Najarian?
One would be closed session, 1A conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Young versus City of Glendale, LAAC case number BC717130. B would be conference with real property negotiators. Property location, 216 North Brand Boulevard. Negotiating parties, Glendale Arts. Property location, 119 Artsakh Avenue. Negotiating parties, Uraftu Coffee Incorporated.